Good afternoon and welcome to the February regular meeting of the Calgary Police Commission. I call this meeting to order and ask that everyone ensure your microphones are muted until you need to speak. My name is Sean Cornet and I am Chair of the Commission. I'm joined today by Commissioners Amtel Siddiqui, Susan Mallon, Heather Campbell, Cherie Neissen-Jordan, TJ Tsong, Kelly Ogle, Samuel Hope, Robert Tange, Ayo Adirdran, and the Councillors Jennifer Wynas and Terry Wong. Today's Calgary Police Service representatives are led by Chief Constable Mark Newfeld. Chief Newfeld, could you please introduce those you expect to speak today?
Thank you Chair and thank you Commissioners and Councillors. My name is Superintendent Claire Smart and I am Chief Newfeld's executive officer. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce you to our executive leadership team who we have here today. And I'm going to start to my far right which is Superintendent Joe Brar, who's from the Operational Support Division, Acting Executive Director Tricia Spadman of the Finance Division, Director Michael Nun, Strategic Communications Section, Executive Director Catherine Murphy, Legal and Regulatory Services Division, Chief People Officer Kim Armstrong of the Bureau of People and Organizational Development, Deputy Chief Raj Gill, Bureau of Community Policing, Chief Constable Mark Newfeld, Deputy Chief Chad Toffick, Bureau of Organizational Performance, and Deputy Chief Katie McClellan, Bureau of Service and Community Support, and last but not least, Acting Deputy Chief Ryan Aliff of the Bureau of Investigative Support. Thank you Chair.
Great, thank you and thank you everyone for being here. For those not familiar with our role, our Commission is made up of a body of 10 community members and two city councillors appointed by City Council and the Government of Alberta. We provide independent citizen governance and oversight of the Calgary Police Service on behalf of all Calgarians. To protect the political neutrality of the police, Alberta's Police Act requires that the police chief report directly to us instead of elected officials. We provide direction to the police through the chief, police policies, monitoring the police complaint process, and approval of how the police budget is spent. Today is one of eight regular meetings we have each year to openly discuss police governance and oversight matters with the services leadership and to hear from the public. We also have several private monthly committee meetings where Commissioners work more directly with the service on various matters that cannot be discussed publicly. Our Commission is meeting today on the ancestral and traditional territory of the Blackfoot Confederacy, made up of the Sichica, Bagani, Omskabebe-Ganai First Nations. It is also home to the Iathka-Nakota-Wiskatabe First Nations comprised of the Chiniki, Berzpa, and Good Stony First Nations, as well as the Tsutsina First Nation. These are the people who made the treaty with the Crown, forming Treaty VII Territory. Calgary is also homeland to the historic Northwest Métis and to Métis Nation of Alberta. Our Commission is committed to doing our part to address the inequity and intergenerational trauma caused by past and current wrongs to support reconciliation with all Indigenous people who share this land with us. Our Commission also condemns racism and prejudice in all forms and is committed to being anti-racist. We stand in solidarity with all Calgarians who are Black, Indigenous, or other peoples of colour. For those joining us for the first time, allow me to provide a brief overview of the format for today's meeting. The public session of this meeting is being livestreamed and a recording will be posted online so we can make it available to those unable to attend. There will be several presentations from the Calgary Police Service, Commission members, and Commission staff. Commissioners will have a chance to ask questions or make comments after each one. Once we've completed the presentations, we'll move to the public participation portion of the meeting. Those who are registered to speak will then be called on by name and will have a chance to either ask a question or make a presentation for our consideration. Following the public participation, we will close the public meeting with the chief and I taking questions from the media. Everyone is welcome to observe the media availability, but only media professionals can participate. To start our agenda items, I will now call for declarations of pecuniary interest or conflict of interest from the Commissioners. Hearing and seeing no declarations, I will now ask for approval of the agenda. Does any member of the Commission wish to request an amendment to the agenda? Hearing none, I will now ask for approval of the consent agenda. For those viewing today's meeting, the consent agenda is a list of routine items and reports that all Commissioners agree can be accepted without more discussion or a separate vote. Does any member of the Commission wish to request an item on the consent agenda be brought forward for discussion? Hearing and seeing no requests, I declare both the agenda and the consent agenda approved as presented. For my Chair's report today, I don't have a lot to share, so I'll keep it brief. Our Commission started this month by holding a half-day session to set our priorities as a board. Two of our key priorities for this coming year are enhancing our meeting procedures and approving how we communicate and engage with the public, other levels of government, and members of the Calgary Police Service. Commissioners also participated in a variety of learning opportunities throughout February. These include courses on both the roots of anti-Black racism and mental health first aid, as well as webinars with our peers across the country on governance of artificial intelligence, how leadership impacts frontline employees in policing, and the value of integrating civilian investigators in police misconduct investigations. Two more Commissioners also spent some time with frontline members by getting a look at the Service's real-time operations centre and going for a ride-along to see what a typical day is like for patrol officers. Commissioners have completed over 20 ride-alongs in the past year. Every Commissioner is required to complete at least one ride-along with the frontline sergeant where they are shown key police facilities around the city and are taken out on the road to get a citywide perspective on how calls and resources are managed. Many Commissioners have also been following up on these initial ride-alongs by doing additional ones with frontline constables and the school resource officers. As mentioned last month, the number of Commissioners toured the CPS Forensic Centre in District 1, another opportunity for us to learn more about the complexity and professionalism of our city's policing. These opportunities to see and hear firsthand what life is like for people working throughout the organisation provide helpful insights and perspectives as we consider the decisions before us. I want to thank all the members who have taken time to show us what they do over the last while. Our Commission has also been working to improve our engagement with new Calgary Police Service employees. Starting tomorrow, we'll be meeting with new recruits and new civilian employees during their training to talk about police governance in Alberta and our role within it. In closing, I want to once again highlight some of the ways that the members of the Calgary Police Service have delivered on the priorities of our Commission and Calgarians. The month started off with patrol officers and Hawks helicopters safely containing a situation where three men and two women fled from officers in multiple stolen vehicles. Having Hawks allowed officers to track the suspects without engaging in a dangerous vehicle pursuit even as they changed vehicles and tried to dispose of firearms. Thanks to the professionalism and seamless coordination of officers across communities, including officers with the Tsutsina Nation Police Service, the suspects were all taken into custody safely. Investigators also protected Calgarians' financial security by laying 350 charges against three individuals believed to be stealing identities and committing rental fraud. These investigations are complex and difficult but are important as the financial impact of these crimes on ordinary Calgarians is significant. In two other investigations, officers responded to animal cruelty concerns reported by two veterinary clinics. With the tips provided by the clinics, officers were able to gather evidence and lay charges against three people while also working with the City of Calgary and the Calgary Humane Society to rescue multiple dogs. On the community engagement side, CPS investigators working with Alert, the Alberta Law Enforcement Response Teams, gave a presentation at the Grey Eagle Resort and Casino to help us build awareness about human trafficking and how the community can help stop it. Officers from a few districts also hosted coffee events in their communities for Calgarians to stop by and talk about anything they want with the officers that police their neighbourhoods. Many members also participated in Black History Month events across the city. This included one hosted at CPS headquarters where Deborah Dobbins, CEO of the Shiloh Foundation, sorry, the Shiloh Centre for Multicultural Roots, participated in a screening of "We Are the Roots" and a discussion on the history of Black people in Alberta. The Service also hosted two other special guests this month as US Consular General Holly Wegar-Monster and Dr Hadis Kamipour joined members for a panel discussion on advancing women in leadership roles. And finally, the Service once again participated in the annual Polar Plunge to raise money for Alberta's Special Olympics. These are just a few of the ways that the Service is working to deliver on Calgarians' desire for a safe, inclusive, and collaborative community. Thank you to all the members of the Service involved in these initiatives. With that, I'll conclude my Chair's report and will now move on to our presentations from Calgary Police Service. Agenda 5.1. We'll be starting off today with a presentation from the Service on the Social, Mental Health, and Addiction Response Team that provides supports to people in police custody. Chief Newfeld, please go ahead with your opening remarks and the first presentation.
Yeah, thanks so much Chair. Thanks for the thoughtful introduction and also the continued engagement by Commissioners with our folks in their workplaces and sometimes the workplaces in the community, which is really important to them. So, I know it's always important, so thank you for continuing to make the time outside of your regular meeting schedules to do that. I'm going to throw it all the way down to Superintendent Brar for the introduction of our very capable presenters here for the SMART programme. It's a real sort of step forward in terms of sort of custody and continuum of care for people that are in police custody. So, looking forward to that. Joe?
Thanks Chief, thanks Chair and Commissioner members. Thanks for the opportunity to attend here today and provide you with some details on the Social, Mental Health, and Addictions Referral Team operating out of the Arrest Processing Unit. While the team gets ready for the presentation, I'll just provide a little bit of context and background. So, as you may or may not be aware, the Arrest Processing Unit is the facility located in northwest Calgary where police officers are required to take individuals that are taken into custody for criminal charges or warrants and that are not eligible for field officer release, meaning that they need to appear before a judge or a justice or be transported to the remand centre or another correctional facility. So, by law, we're required to present somebody before a judge or justice within a 24-hour period, and this is a facility that operates around the clock and about 10,000 individuals visit the facility every year. Not 10,000 unique individuals, there's multiple individuals that are with us several times throughout the year. The SMART initiative was born out of the Government of Alberta's Recovery-Oriented System of Care, which was geared towards providing individuals with opioid addictions, virtual opioid addictions counselling and supports while they're either in the public or in a police facility. A few years ago, we partnered with the Government of Alberta to provide these services to individuals that are in custody at the Arrest Processing Unit. The success of that programme led to us making an application under the Urban Strategy Grant to build upon that programme. And the talented people that I'm going to introduce here shortly took that one step further and then, rather than just having supports for people suffering from mental health, sorry, addictions issues, they also incorporated supports for individuals facing social barriers, mental health and addictions supports as well. So, with that being said, I will introduce Jeremy, sorry, Inspector Jeremy Whitman. He's the inspector in charge of the Arrest Processing and Traffic Section. And his team today to present will be Acting Sergeant Darren Swanson. And we have one of our partners in this project which is clinician Kelsey Ultroey and Constable Rochelle Leah who will be the head of the programme here once Darren moves on to his new position. So, with that being said, Darren, I'll ask you to come up and start the presentation.
Hello and thanks for having us out today to talk about the SMART programme. I'm Darren Swanson and I'm the team lead for our SMART programme at Arrest Processing. Just wait till the PowerPoint gets set up here, but I'm going to talk to you about SMART, what goes on with SMART, and how it falls under the Urban Strategy Grant. There we go. So, SMART stands for Social, Mental Health, and Addictions Referral Team. Under the Urban Strategy Grant from the Government of Alberta, it provides funding at Arrest Processing for us to hire an additional paramedic. We do have a paramedic on scene that provides medical care for every detainee, but we now have an additional paramedic which is with us, which is Kelsey today, to provide expertise to the SMART team. It provides funding for two mental health clinicians who will conduct in-person interviews with our detainees when they're at Arrest Processing. It provided funding for transportation services for detainees, and that's clients that are part of the SMART programme, as well as money towards cell renovations. The mission of SMART is really to work as a team to really address the complex intersection of social, mental health, and addictions needs. Many of our clients have needs in all those areas, but even just to navigate one of those needs for our vulnerable population is very difficult. Our goal is to break down lifestyle barriers for our clients where they're not able to access services for their social, mental health, or addictions needs. Let's see if the presentation here can catch up to the pointer here. Yeah, it's not working. Alright, okay, we'll try that. Alright. So, we're working as a team to address the complex intersection of social, mental health, and addictions needs with the goal of preventing recidivism. We want to try and help the people that are coming into our facility over and over again to really figure out what are root causes for why they're coming there, how can we help them so that they don't have to have repeat visits? Our goal is to break down lifestyle barriers that those people are experiencing, whether it's homelessness, financial issues, mental health issues, employment, maybe disabilities. And also, we do that with working with external agencies. So, we're a referral team at the Arrest Processing. We don't go beyond into the community, but we do work with external agencies who are in the community so that we can bridge the gap between when the person's released from Arrest Processing to who's going to watch out for them in the community. And we call that transferring our continuum of care. So, really that warm handoff. So, the person's with us at Arrest Processing, they're safe, we're able to talk to them, we're able to figure out what their needs, who in the community is going to take them from there? Is it, we're going to transfer them to a social agency? Will the social agency come up and make that connection at Arrest Processing? We're really determining that with the client on what they need. There we go, it's working now. So, SMART works as a team to align with Alberta's recovery model, which is based on a recovery-oriented system of care. And a recovery-oriented system of care is based on the belief that recovery is possible and that people that are accessing recovery services should really face as few barriers as possible in order to access those services for their recovery. So, really Arrest Processing's response to the Alberta recovery model is the SMART programme. Get into a little bit of here how it works. So, at Arrest Processing, we do have our main medic, and that medic assesses everybody that comes into the facility to make sure they're healthy and able to stay there. If there are concerns, sometimes a person will be transferred out to our hospital to have more care for them. But after the medic takes a look at the person, they'll watch for signs of social, mental health, and addictions concerns, and they'll fill out a referral form that then goes to our SMART team. Our SMART team then takes those referral forms and we triage based on the person's needs. People at Arrest Processing with your bail hearing, you're not there for more than 24 hours, so based on who is going to have their bail hearing next, we'll decide who that's we're going to speak to next after that. And then our clinicians conduct an in-person interview with the person to speak to them about what are they going through, what are their needs, and what do they need. It's really important for us at SMART that SMART is a voluntary process. You don't have to be part of it. And also consent is obtained from the person so that the person's aware of, we do have mental health clinicians with AHS, we're all going to be looking into their file. We want the person to be aware of what is going to be shared and that they're comfortable with that. And it all lines up with what the person's goals are. Interview room and cell renovations. So, this is an exciting part for us. At Arrest Processing, we have several rooms where it's actually a jail cell on one side and it's a civilian area on the other where you can interact with the detainee through a protective glass barrier. We looked at these rooms, we thought one of these would be a great opportunity to turn it into an area where we would interview our SMART clients. And the clinicians, they could be safe on the civilian side and they could also interact with the detainee. Now, nothing says jail really more than having to talk on a phone through the glass to someone. So, we thought, what can we do with that? Well, the white institutional walls, can we paint those? We're working on a speakerphone system with a handset options just to give the detainee, if they want to sit in the middle of the glass and talk to the clinician over speakerphone, that's great. If they want more privacy on the handset, they have that option as well. And we looked at what could we paint on the walls? We want to have something that's culturally neutral, that doesn't identify with any groups. And we started with our slogan. Our slogan in SMART is "Together We Can Make It." That's really important for us because if you're familiar with the 12 steps, any of the 12 steps of AA are a "we" oriented. So, we're in this together. And SMART isn't about telling our client, "You need to do this, you need to do that." It's really about meeting them where they're at, assessing what they need. Many, many of our clients already know what they need. They just need that extra help getting there with our help and with those social agencies. So, we're really in this together, and together we can make it to help them get to where they need. Again, we painted another mural on this wall. So, this wall has our SMART logo. We've got the waves of our SMART logo as well as the coloured dots. We'll get into that in a bit what that means. But what's really exciting for us is right below the logo is a virtual screen. So, essentially, this can be a Zoom meeting, this can be a Microsoft Teams meeting for the detainee, and this is where we can connect them to supports. Any of their supports out in the community are welcome to come up to Arrest Processing and actually meet and use our interview room and meet with their client. But if they can't, then we have this virtual option. And we've seen how handy this is. You know, COVID taught us that. Today's presentation's being streamed over the media. Can we have our client do a housing assessment over this before they leave the facility? Maybe the person got remanded and they're not going to be able to leave the facility and go to have their housing assessment. Can they connect with peer support? Can they connect with their probation officer? All these hurdles that we would learn through our interviews from the client that, hey, this is a real problem for me when I get out. I just can't get to probation. I just can't get down to Source Calgary for a housing assessment. Let's access this virtually and let's get that done for them before they go. Again, another one of the walls that we painted a mural on, and again, just some neutral colours, but some words of affirmation for them. "You are enough, you matter, you are brave." Many, many of our clients haven't heard these words in a long time, if even ever. So, this really gets to in part of our core values of just really remembering the person, that there's a person here. The circumstances that brought them into Arrest Processing don't really come up for us. We're really saying, this is where you're at. How do we help you move forward? And we want you to remember that you're a person and that you're important. Talked about transportation services for SMART clients. So, the grant also provided funding for us to buy a brand-new van and outfit it with what we call a silent partner or a glass divider behind the drivers. And there's also an acrylic partition down the middle, so the van has the capacity of transporting two clients at once and the clients don't have to interact. Now, we've utilised and leveraged our Commissioners at Arrest Processing, and we've augmented each team with additional two Commissioners using the money from the Urban Strategy Grant. That way, the Commissioners, they function on the floor, they do the movements with the detainees. We're not transporting people all day long, so instead of having a transportation service sitting around waiting for a transportation come up, they can then augment and help the teams and increase the efficiency at Arrest Processing. So, it's two Commissioners, civilian drivers, and this is an important part, they're driving detainees that have been released, detainees that have been cooperative, voluntary part of our programme. And also the CPS role, my role with the team is to look into the person's background and make sure they're not a safety risk to our drivers as well as to themselves, and really make sure that we're going to have a good experience when we're transporting the person. We're going to transport people to a place that we know, that we've called, that we've made a connection with, and that agency that we're transporting to, they're going to be expecting this person. Try to reduce as many surprises as possible. So, who is a SMART client? A SMART client is anyone displaying or indicating struggles with mental health, social needs, addictions. Basically, that's where our name came from. And also, anyone demonstrating a desire to address lifestyle concerns regardless of previous treatment, treatment history. If this person's had a lot of treatment and they've had sobriety and they're now working on sobriety again, we want to engage with them. If they've never thought about sobriety before, if this is the first day, this is a great first step. We're going to engage with them. But similar going back to AA, just needing a desire to want to change. If the person wants to change and they're having a conversation about it, that's a win for us. That's a great first step. Some indicators of social, mental health, or addictions issues are listed on the screen there. But just reflecting on where they're at, frustrated with being in the cycle of continually coming back into Arrest Processing, not knowing how to get out of that cycle, not knowing how to deal with their justice issues, all those things will be picked up by the paramedic to offer referral. And we're also working with patrol to advise them, hey, if you're speaking with your detainee or someone that's under arrest while they're in custody and they mention they're having some struggles with these and you don't have the right resources, please reach out to SMART. That's where our AHS clinicians come into play. They're really the subject matter expert in finding those connections and those social agencies in the community to help to address this person's needs. So, we talked about the waves and our logo. So, the waves of our logo really represent life. Sometimes you're up, sometimes you're down, sometimes it feels like a rollercoaster. But to navigate through life on a rollercoaster, we need to hold steadfast to our core values. And the coloured dots represent our core values. So, to start us off, our first core value is empathy and respect. Best way to affect change in someone is to have really good rapport, and the best way to build genuine rapport is to have empathy and respect for the person. And so, just really being real for our clients and really being bear for them. And maybe I've never experienced what this client's going through, but it's really about when the interviews are happening and when I'm interacting with them, finding something self, something within myself to help me to relate to what they're going through. And as well as demonstrating respect. And that core value goes not just to our clients but to our team members as well. Are we there for each other? Do we respect each other? Do we respect the passion we have for each of our clients? Collaboration, that one's pretty self-explanatory, but we're working with AHS and CPS. We're also working with many of the wonderful agencies outside of Calgary, collaborating with them to come up with a plan to help out our client. Prevention and intervention. So, we could be helping someone not go down the path that they're directed on. We might be intervening in someone right in the middle when their life is a big crisis. But again, it goes back to that desire. As long as they have a desire to change, we want to interact with them. Accountability and transparency. So, are we going to follow through with what we're advising for our clients? Are we going to offer genuine support that we're going to connect with them in the community? We don't want to transport them somewhere and have nobody available for them. That's just going to be hard for them to. We want to build trust through that accountability. And again, amongst ourselves as a team member, are we accountable to show up and do the best job we can for our clients, as well as taking care of our own selves? We've got to take care of our own selves so that we can help others. Referral and support, it's in our name. We're not a resource team. We only have up to 24 hours with the person. As we get to know them, if they come back again, we may be able to spend more time with them in building relationship. But we're really referring them out to an agency that is the resource and that's, there's going to have that subject matter expertise in the community to help them out. And then one that's close to my heart is our Trauma-Informed Care Response. And that's really just remembering the person behind the addiction, remembering the person behind the trauma story, the person behind the criminal investigation. None of our clients woke up one day and decided they want to be part of this cycle and be stuck in this. They have a traumatic past that they have had, and it's important for us to understand, to just appreciate that they have that. And in time, if they're comfortable, they may disclose those things, but just acknowledging that they have that in the past and it's hard for them to get the help that they need. So, on one of our walls, we have another mural, and it's a bunch of puzzle pieces. So, we really like this quote, but every time we make a connection with a new social agency, we put another logo on the wall just to show ourselves as a team, like this is who we're working at. We need these partnerships. And as well, the detainee can see through the glass that the puzzle is continuing to grow and they can see the agencies we've connected with. Our quote is, "You are part of a puzzle in someone's life. You may never know where you fit, but someone's life may never be..." You may never know where you fit, but someone's life may never be complete without you in it." We also talk about the seed of recovery. So someone may come in and never thought about recovery, and we may talk to them, and that may just plant that seed. Or maybe they've already had some sort of treatment in the past, periods of sobriety, and they've got that recovery in their mind, and they speak to us, and we're just going to water that seed, or we're going to till the soil. And it's fantastic to be part of the harvest of that seed when the person gets their life turned around, or they graduate from a drug treatment program. But it's not about just being part of that. It's about being part of every stage and knowing that every stage is important for this person. And without that one little stage, without that one little watering of that seed, they may not get to the next stage. So really, knowing, we may not see a result in some people, we may see some in others, but we are effective in everybody's life. So SMART provides enhanced care for detainees, which includes what's listed on the screen there, but more specifically, at Arrest Processing, we now have the SUBLOCADE injection. If you're not familiar with that, SUBLOCADE is similar to Suboxone. Suboxone is an anti-opioid treatment, and Suboxone you have to take daily. It's hard enough for me to remember to take my multivitamin every day. Our vulnerable population, to find a Suboxone, to take it every day, almost seems impossible at times. So the SUBLOCADE is an injection that lasts 30 days, and that's a new thing that we have at Arrest Processing. They can get an injection when we're there with a proper prescription, and then they don't have to worry about their Suboxone for the next 30 days. Some clients, they may be back within 30 days. Maybe they would get their next injection with us. So that's just a way to give them that little extra support before they go out into the community, because really navigating all these social, mental health, and addictions agencies is quite tasking and seems impossible at times. So that concludes the SMART presentation. I can open the floor to any questions.
Thank you very much. I expect we will have some questions here. So I think I'll start with Commissioner Siddiqui and then Counselor Wong.
Thanks, Constable Swanson, for that. Your care comes through when you talk about it, so thank you for that. Couple of questions. The funding that you have, how long is that for?
It's for two years.
And then, do you have a plan for after the two years?
Yeah, so part of the grant was money towards hiring a strategist that would help us figure out what stats are we going to collect, how are we going to collect that. That part's been done, and then a different strategist will be hired to oversee the stat collection and, after two years, put together a plan of, okay, these are our results, is how many people we help. And I know we focus, what would success look like for us? We can't base our success based on this many people changed their life around. Really, our success is based on how thoroughly we can, we provide supports to everybody. Because even if someone changes for a day, even if we get them to the next agency and they're sober or they're a small baby step on their journey of recovery, that is a success. So after the two years, all that will be tracked, it'll be presented to the government, and then the decision would be, do we continue on with that? And we feel very optimistic that, you know, before this, there was no, there was very little being done. Now we're adding a bunch of extra help for them, but we feel very optimistic that this program would continue after two years.
Do you have preliminary stats on how many people actually take advantage of this?
Yeah, so because it's a grant, we're limited in our operation hours at Arrest Processing. But it, and I will look to my paramedic, she keeps our stats, but about 13% of the people that are coming in, we're getting referrals for. So because a lot of people don't want to change, maybe they're in an intoxicated state. It was mentioned, we have 10,000 people come through Arrest Processing a year. Probably 5,000 are maybe going to be looked at, to be talked to us, and then maybe even less than that. So the preliminary, yeah, the preliminary data is about 13% of all that 10,000 being referred to us, and then we're following up with about 65% to 70% of those people.
Great, thank you so much.
Commissioner Wong.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Swanson. A couple of questions, and then you mentioned this is a part of a provincial program. The provincial program, I presume, had a series of goals, objectives, outcomes, measures. Is that, would that be fair?
Yeah.
Okay. And are we meeting their objectives or their measures?
Might refer to...
Thanks for the question, Counselor Wong. So a part of the grant was actually an evaluation plan as well and reporting back, so we are required to report back to the GOA on the outcomes. I think the commission received a copy of that, the first report or the second report at FNA earlier this month.
Okay, unfortunately, I wasn't there, so I'm not aware of that one. The question I was going to ask, though, is that, when the government provided that, does the service agree with their targets?
So we were, a part of the grant application was consultation with, with the individuals responsible for issuing the grant and helping us write the grant. So yeah, a lot of those targets, we did help develop ourselves.
Okay. The third part of the question is more a process question. Given the number of resources, one paramedic, two clinicians, and that, is that enough resources to be able to service, you know, all the, all the detainees, I'll use for that term?
I think that's the, that's a big question. We've built the program. Lots of thought and care went into it. It's obviously a compassionate, compassionate-led program, but the next part will be the evaluation. Is this being impactful? Are we having an effect? And then we can make next determinations. And that's why I think for us, building an evaluation plan and building that right into the, the business case for this was important.
Okay. I guess my concern is, if you don't have enough resources, then the measures, the outcome, may not give you the significant result you're looking for, that moves you to the next step more than anything else. Okay. The last and final, final question I've got is, again, the next steps, and again, Constable Swanson is correct, the next steps in terms of referrals, is there enough time in the Arrest Processing segment of their stay? Is there enough time for you to do what you need to do before you process them forward?
It's a great question, because we are limited by 24 hours max. Sometimes it's less time with the person. That is our, I'd say that's one of our biggest challenges, is what time it is in day. The social agencies close around supper time, and the social agencies are open business hours. Arrest Processing is open all hours. So we are trying to keep track of, like, say, we did explore, could we have a night shift crew? Again, the social agencies are closed, so we're not transporting people somewhere to do a housing assessment. So just came back to what you're saying, it's an ongoing conversation with the team of triaging people, figuring out where someone's going. Someone may, just because they've been at Arrest Processing longer than someone else, we may see the, the person that just got there sooner, because their needs would be a prescription pickup. Something else the transport team does is, we'll go to different pharmacies and pick up prescriptions. That might have to happen during business hours where the other person's needs, we would talk to them later, because their needs might be able to extend past business hours.
Yeah.
Is that your question?
Yeah, it does. I know, before I came to city service, I was in hospitals and healthcare and emergency departments. And when we talk about, you know, it's the first 60 minutes, 60 days, and so on and so forth, you can't just time bound it. You have to ensure that, within that first 60 minutes, for example, what are you actually doing? Have you achieved that before you move to the next time period, next time period? So I just want to be sure you have adequate resources, adequate outcomes, not only just being time bound. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ogle.
This, I'm going to try my best to stay straight here. As a person in long-term recovery, I'm over the moon with this. And as a, part of the reason I'm on the Police Commission is, along with Commissioner Tangay, we were on the Recovery Expert Advisory Panel two years ago, building out the infrastructure for these programs. And to answer one of Counselor Wong's or Commissioner Wong's questions, there's going to be a lot of quantitative data collected over the next couple of years. Who collects better data than the police? And I think that we have to be really patient here, in the auspices of the media that's out there about, you know, we're, we're casting increasing deaths in, to addiction, from addiction. It was in the news again this week. This is going to get worse before it gets better. But this is, again, I want to, I want to commend the team. This is really, really the right way to go, in my opinion. I don't have a question, I just want to thank you for the work you're doing. This is really, really important stuff. And I'll just tell you as well, a large majority of the people that try to get sober don't. It's just a fact. You have to have a want, more than the need. So I'll just, it was more of an editorial chair than, but again, thank you.
And thank you, I appreciate you sharing.
And thank you for this, all the work that you've been doing in the presentation and the report, and letting us know that you are collecting the data that we can look forward to, to understanding a little bit better how it's working. So much appreciated for all of this. So thank you very much for this report.
Thank you.
And with that, I, was there more? Commissioner Campbell? Okay, sorry, I didn't see your hand there.
Thanks very much, Chair. Thank you for the presentation, Constable Swanson. So SMART is designed as a recovery-oriented system of care. How much of the challenge that you're seeing at Arrest Processing would be directly solved by three things: supervised consumption of drugs, safe supply, and decriminalization?
That's a, that's a big question. I'll defer to my superior.
Thanks for that question. So I don't know the answer to that, to be honest with you. This is just a program that was set up. These people are going to be going to a police facility. We're just trying to find opportunities while we're intersecting with them, providing them the support they need. And the reason I'm a big advocate for this program is, when I was responsible for the investigative operations sections, the auto theft response team was one of the areas that reported to me. So one of the, one of the asks I had of our investigators was, at the end of the criminal interview, ask people how they got into the lifestyle, why are they involved in what they're involved in? And the outstanding answer, so the number one answer to that was drug addictions, and everybody, most, sorry, not everybody, but most of them responded, they wish they could go back and change that day that they got involved in this, this lifestyle. So this is just an opportunity for us to support them. I think the conversation around safe consumption sites and decriminalization, like, that's another conversation that I think we've spoken to a little bit on through the AACP. But again, like I said, this is independent of that. This is an opportunity for us to provide people with some care when they're in our custody.
Thanks very much, Superintendent Burr. I think there's an opportunity for us to talk about substance use, separate from mental health, separate from addictions. Those, they aren't necessarily interconnected, and I think we need to think about our language as we, as we work through conversations on recovery, addictions, substance use. They're not necessarily the same thing. They're not synonyms for each other. Second, I think, you know, Commissioner Ogle suggested, who collects better data than the police? I would suggest engineers, but that's just, that's just a personal bias. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Commissioner Wines, please.
Thanks. You mentioned that for the Suboxone, it's every 30 days, but is there a divergence so that if they've been arrested once, you start that program with them, do they have to get arrested again to get help, or do you guys give them a side door where they're connected to still get that next injection?
Yeah, they would have. Kelsey, do you want to speak to that? This is Kelsey's area of expertise with the medicines.
Hi, my name's Kelsey. I'm the paramedic on the team. To answer your question, so we work with the Virtual Opioid Dependency Program. We have been able to get the SUBLOCADE and the Suboxone through them. When they are released from custody, we can give them the information so they can follow up on their own with a phone call through the Virtual Opioid Dependency Program, so they don't have to have that face-to-face interaction. They indicate what pharmacy they use, and then the pharmacist can even administer it for them. Alternatively, we can provide them with information or potentially transport them, depending on if they fit the criteria, to something like the Opioid Dependency Program out of Sheldon Schumer, through CUPS, with the DI, that, all those places that can offer that opioid agonist therapy. So in the event that they hopefully don't come back after the 30 days, they have the opportunity to still follow through on that medication, whether it be virtually or in person, wherever their comfort levels are at.
That's good to hear. I just wanted to make sure they didn't have to come back to jail to get the next step.
No.
Thank you. And Chief, did you have a comment you would like to make?
Just a super quick one, just in relation to Commissioner Campbell's thoughts on that. I think, like, those structural pieces, I think, are all pieces that could be worked in or not. Like, that's a very political side of it, but I really think, like, the notion that we have 10,000, and not unique individuals, as has been said, but 10,000 opportunities for people that are coming through every year. I think, you know, when Kelsey and people like that get an opportunity to build a bit of a relationship, and if we do get SUBLOCADE, that gives you that 30-day period, which can be a game changer. Now, when they go back out again, we realize that there, it may be, you know, even with the van, I think, Darren, you talked about, they're being able to do a warm handoff. But I think the data piece, to your point, is going to be interesting to see, where do we lose people? Because if we, if we have opportunities to connect people to resources, do we lose it because it's the wrong time of day, and those resources aren't available at that time, and then they go back into a cycle? Are we, you know what I mean? Like, those are the pieces, I think, we're going to be able to advocate then for extra investment and capacity building in areas of the system where we're losing people. But I do think these are serious opportunities and another open door here, to be able to make a potential turning point for somebody that comes into police custody in ways they never were before. They were there for 24 hours, they went to the remand, or they were discharged, in some cases, back into homelessness or drug addiction, which wasn't benefiting anybody. So I think this is a super good program.
So I'm going to Commissioner Tangay and then Commissioner Ogle, and then I'm going to be a little bit aware of time and move on to the next agenda. Thank you.
I just, again, want to say thank you. This is really, really good work. Just to be clear, safe supply isn't a political issue, it's a medical and lack of evidence issue, and experimental at best. What we're doing in providing first-line treatment is incredible. And the connections that we have in our communities with the VODP and the ODP and the RAM clinics and CUPS, and it's fantastic to see that, for the first time, we're not just having people arrested, going through processing and kicking them out, knowing they'll come back. For the first time, we're actually trying to intervene and help people. And so what you guys are doing is incredible, and really, really happy for you. And don't worry about the, the noise and chatter. The fact that we're providing evidence-based interventions and treatment is what matters. So congrats.
Thank you. And last word to you, Commissioner Ogle.
Just, and I'm down in the weeds a little bit, but I don't see in the slides recovery coaching. It's an, it's a part of the newer, more prescient work that's done, and I could, let's have an off-line about that, because it's, you know, there's, there's all kinds of folks that they only need one step, the first one. And, you know, the more chronic, highly dependent on, on opiates, et cetera, is, is a lot, but the majority of people are just drunks. And they, they don't need a lot of, of, like me, a lot of work. So I'll have an off-side with you, Constable, and I can point you in some of those directions.
That's a great idea, thank you.
Great. And thank you again. We're going to move on to the crime reports, so thank you very much for all of this work and appreciate the direction it's going in. Thanks. So the next items on our agenda are two reports on crime trends. The first report covers what the investigative areas of the service are seeing, and the second report covers the frontline, what the frontline officers are seeing. The commissioners will listen to both reports, and then we'll ask questions after the verbal presentations. So I'll pass it back over to the service. Thanks.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to pass over to Acting Deputy Aleth. He'll start out on the Bureau of Investigative Support side.
Thanks, Chief, and I'm here representing Deputy Chief Paul Cook, who couldn't be here today. I'll start with some highlights from our bureau. We saw a 4.5% increase in domestic conflict and domestic violence reports in 2023 when compared to 2022. Although this was, although this was an increase, this was a significantly lower increase than the 15% increase reported from 2021 to 2022. In 2023, we saw a 35% increase in missing person reports from the five-year average. Of the 5,170 missing person reports, in 2023, only nine remain unsolved. In January of this year, victims of fraud lost a total of 9 million Canadian and 3 million US dollars. We know that's underreported. In all of 2023, victims lost more than 27.8 million in relation to cryptocurrency and related crimes. We also know that is underreported. The number of vehicle thefts in Calgary dropped significantly in 2023, reporting a decrease reporting a decrease of almost 18% from 2022 and 16% from the five-year average. As of today, just before I left the office, there were 10 shootings in Calgary since the beginning of the year. Five of these shootings have determined, have been determined to have been targeted, and so far, two have been confirmed to be the result of organized crime conflict in Calgary. So far in 2024, we've had three homicides, including one domestic-related incident and one that occurred during a home invasion. In January of 2024, homicide detectives charged an 18-year-old man and a 25-year-old man with second-degree murder in relation to a fatal shooting that occurred in September of 2023 in the northwest community of Capitol Hill. Domestic violence. In 2023, we responded to 4,070 domestic violence occurrences compared to just over 3,600 in 2022. In 2023, we also responded to 19,000-plus domestic conflict reporting calls, which increased from 18,700 in 2022. In January of this year, our domestic violence risk assessor team has already assessed 2,187 occurrences in January, reviewing each of those cases for individual risk. Our investigative teams in our domestic conflict unit investigated 183 files. Many of these investigations were initiated in 2023. Our elder abuse response team, which is embedded in our domestic conflict unit, began 20 new investigations in January. Our home team and fugitive apprehension detail, which is embedded in our domestic conflict unit, executed 93 warrants in January. In one of these cases, a victim reported two separate instances, incidents of assault by her partner after he returned home from clubbing. After the victim came forward, this team tracked down the offender and arrested him on seven outstanding warrants and fresh charges. Last year, there were 142 applications made to the Calgary Police Service under Clare's Law legislation. Our domestic violence unit handles these requests and provides the required information so women can make better informed decisions about who to spend their time with. The Disclosure to Protect Against Domestic Violence Act, also known as Clare's Law, as per the Government Alberta website, gives people who feel at risk of domestic violence a way to get their information about their partners so they can make informed choices about their safety. So, of these 142 applications, there were 91 disclosures completed. 19 files are still in progress, and there were 32 files with no disclosure. Reasons for no disclosure include no response, no response back from the person at risk, or they may have lived out of our jurisdiction, or the potential person being asked about does not live within the borders of Canada. In 2023, we had just over 5,100 persons that were reported missing to CPS, which is an increase of 35%. Of those persons reported missing last year, only nine cases remain outstanding. The repeated missing persons, missing twice or more, represent 64.5% of all missing persons in 2023. Last year, 24 individuals were reported missing 25 times or more throughout the year. Almost half of all people reported missing were located within six hours, and over 80% were located within 40, 48 hours, and 94% within seven days. There are 542 frauds reported in January of this year. Victims were impacted in 348 of those cases, meaning they lost money or their personal information was compromised. Like I said before, we know this is underreported. 55 of these targeted a business, and 390 targeted a person. The estimated financial loss resulting from reported frauds in January was 9 million, as discussed. The majority of fraud victims were contacted by offenders online or by phone. Offenders posing as service providers continues to be the top trend reported in Calgary, accounting for 11% of reported frauds in January. I'll move over to cyber. Thanks to an investment in new technology and the hiring of civilian digital evidence technicians and the expansion of the investigative review program, our digital forensics teams, team successfully cleared a backlog of digital exhibits waiting for review, which had been an issue in 2022 and 2023. At one point, we had over 500 exhibits pending. The investigative review program now allows investigators outside of the cyber forensics unit to be more involved in identifying digital evidence for prosecution value, which allows DFT investigators to work on more complex cases. To give you an idea of the volume of this work, in January of 2024, DFT received 134 new exhibits in January relating to 50 criminal investigations, and that's an increase of 22% from January of last year. The total dollar value related to cryptocurrency investigations in 2023 was over 27.8 million. One victim alone reported a loss of 3 million in cryptocurrency. This is underreported. In January of this year, victims have already reported over 8 million lost, with one victim losing 3.3 million. We have a one-of-a-kind blockchain investigative team, and it is working hard to investigate these offenses and continues to collaborate with law enforcement partners internationally, including recent cases in Europe and across the province. The number of vehicle thefts in 2023 decreased by 17% from 2022 and 15% from the five-year average. In 2023, just over 4,600 vehicles were reported stolen. Of those vehicles stolen in 2023, almost 80% were recovered. In total, stolen vehicles recovering, 4,500 stolen vehicles were recovered in Calgary in 2023. This number includes vehicles stolen in previous years as well as from other jurisdictions. Our auto theft team, along with additional investigative teams across the service, works proactively to target auto theft hotspots and known prolific offenders. The service also works closely with Alert to share intelligence in relation to organized crime and related auto thefts. And that concludes my report.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioner members. You, you have the January Public Safety, or, sorry, Public Safe Spaces snapshot and the January crime reports. And further, Chair Cornet also spoke about some of our successes in the last bit in terms of her opening comments. While you see several investigations and community engagement updates in the snapshot, tonight I want to tell you about two stories that work, about work that wouldn't have been made the, the news, but have significant impact on Calgarians. The first involves a prolific auto theft offender who we have previously profiled in our presentations, and one we would call a high-system user. On the night of January 23rd, he went on a break and enter spree in North Calgary, stole an SUV from an auto body shop, then a new truck from a dealership. After that, he hit a couple of salons back-to-back. At least seven businesses were affected, and two had significant damage to their overhead doors as he drove the stolen vehicle through them. The next day, the truck was recovered in West Vancouver. Officers confirmed the suspect's identity as that of the prolific offender who had recently been released from jail with multiple conditions pending an upcoming court date. We worked with the Vancouver Police to locate him, but as luck would have it, he returned to Calgary for his probation meeting. He's since been arrested and charged with new offenses, including multiple breaches. This shows how one prolific offender can have such a big impact on crime within our community in a short period of time, and how we continue to struggle with nonviolent high-system users in our judicial system. To tack on to the earlier presentation on the SMART program, the second story involves a shoplifting-turned-robbery downtown, a trend we've seen on the rise, as was mentioned in the January CPC report. On January 20, 31st, sorry, officers were called to a downtown grocery store where a loss prevention officer was attempting to arrest someone for theft when another person pointed a firearm at them. Officers were quick to respond, used CCTV photos to locate the suspect with the firearm on a C train where they were arrested. Officers located a hunting knife on the train, on the floor near where the man was arrested, as well as an airsoft handgun and a loose rifle round in his bag. The man was arrested for robbery with a firearm. During the search, officers also located an iPad that was identified as being stolen from a car prowling just days earlier, and a check for $7,000 that was also confirmed to have been stolen from a vehicle. The man was charged with robbery and a fire, with a firearm, and while the officer was transporting him down to our arrest processing section, he swung by a fast-food restaurant to get this individual some food. It was at that point the individual started talking to our officer. He told the officer that he and a friend had a plant to shoplift at the grocery store. His friend was also going to go in while he stayed outside as a lookout. He saw his friend start to fight with the LPO, and he pulled out his gun, racked it, and pointed at the officer. He says the LPO looked really scared, and then he felt bad for him. He hated the violence, being homeless, and using fentanyl and meth. He told the officer that he had weapons to protect himself as he gets robbed all the time. He said he was going to be a father and had bought the iPad for $5, thinking he'd be able to figure out how to unlock it at the library. The man was taken to APS, and the officers encouraged him to engage with the SMART program, Social Workers and Addictions Assistance Program, as you just were, were, saw the presentation. He engaged with Kelsey, who you've met, and a plan was created for him. This is a simple story about everyday interactions that our officers have. It demonstrates the compassion of our officers and our commitment to support accountability. It also shows root problems, the impacts they have on our community, and the efforts to connect people with resources within the system we have. It's not perfect, but I can over, I cannot overstate the importance of these individual everyday interactions and the impacts they can have on those we interact with, day in and day out. Open to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll start with Commissioner Shireen Neeson-Jordan, and Commissioner Campbell next. Thank you.
I have two short questions. One, the missing person 33% increase is a significant increase. I also understand that there is repeating individuals, and those are often adolescents, is my understanding. But has there been any work on how you might be able to, why are you getting the 33% increase? And what can we do about the, the repeat offenders and, and trying to minimize that workload? And the second question is, I really would like to understand whether the catalytic converter program has anything to do with the auto theft decrease.
Thanks for the questions. They're both very good. And I have, I feel confident that I can answer most of them, so that's why I'm happy about the questions. So, the 33% increase, there's a number of contributing factors. Repeat, young runaways, so youth, youth offenders. We're seeing an upkick in opioid-related missing person reports. So, family members will call in and say, you know what, I have a family member, we know he's using, we haven't spoken to him in a few weeks, we'd like to report him missing. So, we, we've seen an upkick in that. And we're also seeing the numbers kind of fill back into the same space they were in pre-COVID. So, all those things are contributing to the missing persons 33% increase. I'll say this, when it comes to the, what are we doing about the chronic or the repeat missing youth, we have focused almost specifically on that as high, the high percentage of those missing or repeat youths are Indigenous. So, as we discussed at one of our previous meetings, we have created a position within our missing persons team that focuses directly on missing Indigenous people. We have, we're at the cusp of posting a position for a systems navigator to partner with that investigator to start unraveling the issues around repeated reports. So, it could be a number of things. That person will come, hopefully with a lot of experience from the Indigenous community and can help us navigate the social systems that may be barriers or enhancers to why this is happening. We, we think already with having had the, the Indigenous investigator in position now for a few months, that person's already starting to try and do some of that work. So, once this partner is in place, we, we believe we're going to see the numbers go down. And the catalytic converter, so the, the auto theft increase or decrease, pardon me, is, is not just catalytic converter, that had an impact. So, there's a, there's a number of things contributing to this, and there's a number of different operations that we've targeted. So, it's prolific offenders, okay? We're working with our auto theft team. We're talking better between Edmonton, the RC, and our RCMP partners at Stroud, so that we're not having as many misses when somebody drives a stolen car from Calgary and goes to Canmore. We're just having better coordinated response. And yes, the catalytic converter focus did help, but in all these cases, a lot of these offenders, even when we charge them, they are back in the community in short order committing the same offenses for a number of the reasons that have already been discussed here today.
Thanks very much. I really appreciate the additional data with respect to intimate partner violence statistics and the missing persons information. Acting Deputy Chief Aleth, that was something that I provided Deputy Chief Cook with some fairly targeted comments in last meeting, so I appreciate the responsiveness and the detail in this report. Deputy Chief Gill, in your community policing report, two things. First, in the area of social disorder, that particular category, I've said this before, and I'm going to say it, hopefully, I think my time is, when I say four, when I say it four times, things change. That category is too full. Possible gunshots are more, are far different than unwanted guests, and all of those are clumped together in that one category. Is there an opportunity for us to create more distinction in the social disorder category and to have better demarcation for understanding that our community? And then, second piece is on page seven of your report, under the Automated Traffic Enforcement update, you have two contributing factors. First, provincial guidelines. Second is seasonal factors. Under the, under the seasonal factors, none of those items are unique to this particular winter in Calgary. So, if you could remove those from the report, they, they seemed rather nonsensical to me. Thank you.
Absolutely. For your first question, Commissioner, happy to take that back with my team and see if we can subdivide those, that larger category into subcategories to give a more fulsome demarcation between those. Happy to do that. The, I guess, the seasonal factors are the seasonal factors. I think if, if you don't support those, I'm happy to go back and look at defining those differently.
Well, I, I'm pretty sure that drivers slowing down due to winter road conditions is not unique to this particular winter. License plates obscured by snow, et cetera, are not unique to this particular winter. And intersection, intersection safety device malfunction due to freeze-thaw weathering, this is not the coldest winter we've had in Calgary in my 20 years. So, I'm certain that that's not unique to this consideration. So, to, 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 to list them as contributing factors, I find, I find inappropriate. Thank you.
Can I ask, Commissioner Campbell, do you want to direct the service through a motion to subdivide the social misconduct section?
It would be helpful, but I'm not, I, it may be a better, it may be better placed at committee. I'm, I'm open to the most effective way to do that, Chair.
Why don't we take that to committee and, and then move from there?
Thank you.
I would just quickly, maybe what would help is actually if we take that away to respond, and I know you have brought it up before because that's a large number. But these things tend to have a history, why they were both like that. And again, as we uncouple them, and I'm not saying we won't do that, because it's, I think it would be wise to do, but that will change our ability to compare stats going forward. So, I'm just thinking maybe we'll bring back some information on why they're put together the way they are, and how we might best do that that might make the most sense, where we can still use, utilize the data going forward as best we can, so.
So, I think we probably need a motion then to ask you to please look into social disorder category and bring that back to the next time that you report, that you bring this report back.
I'll make that motion. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you. Second, Commissioner Tenge, thank you. And any opposed? So, Amber will quickly grab all of that for us. Thank you, to get the wording right. Thank you very much for that. Are there any further questions for the, sorry, Commissioner Neeson-Jordan? Were you next? Yes. Yes, please, go ahead.
Thanks. I just, and this reflects on the social disorder number again, but it's in a different way. The number appeared to be down related to your five-year average. And yet, we had significant numbers of protests. We had significant number of overtime. Are you able to correlate the fact that you're providing more officers in managing those protests and your ability to not, not do some of the, basically, charges? So, do the two correlate, the fact you're providing more people on the street to manage the protests, and that's allowing your social disorder numbers to go down?
So, I'll just give you, that anybody can jump in here, but I don't think so. Because what I'm also seeing is there's an increase in the number of officer-generated calls or proactive work being done, in particular, in response to the work on safe public spaces, whether that be transit or other public spaces. So, those two things are both true. One is we've had an increased number of protests, so we have had resources dedicated to those. At the same time, we also have had more focus on transit and more proactive work done there, which may explain why these numbers are down here as well. So, I don't, so I think they're correlated, but I don't know that protests come into it. I think it's just an extra effort. I think it's just an extra effort that's gone on, on public spaces in addition to protests.
And if I can just tack on to the Chief's comment, two additional factors, in addition to what the Chief said, is also the additional focus and the growth at the city bylaw and city transit peace officer program, and they're going down to three districts, three district model. They're more focused that they've had over what the city safe spaces plan. And I had a second one, which has now escaped my mind, but I'm sure it'll come to me on my drive home.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Wong, please.
Thank you. Thank you for the two presentations. I guess every time I see these statistics, presentations, trends, the question often asked is, are we hitting targets that we want to hit? And are we communicating that effectively to not only commission members but to the public? Because again, as not only the roles of Commissioner, but as roles of councillors, I hear from our constituents, you know, are we spending money in the right place? Have we funded properly? Are we getting the desired outcome? So Chief, perhaps you can ask this one. Are we taking these numbers and transforming them in a way that the public can really understand value, safety, security, integrity? Thank you.
Yeah, super good question. Thank you. And that's really important because I think when you look at the snapshot of public space or public safety here for January, that's a good news story. Now, the numbers were askew a little bit there through COVID with respect to just behavioral changes as we know, but the fact of the matter is most of those offense categories are going down. We have the one there, the commercial robberies that's staying, or sorry, the sexual offenses that are flat, but the majority of those are going down, which is a good news story. The other thing I think that's important there is when we talk about vehicle theft going down, we have heard that nationally there's a trend around, and particularly in Ontario and Quebec, around high-end vehicles being stolen and shipped out of the country. So I think sometimes, you know, Calgarians may hear, you know, that national news story and then think that the numbers may be going up here, when in fact, that's not the case. And the majority of crimes are probably more crimes of opportunity where the vehicles are recovered. So it's a bit of a different issue that we have here. So I know we're going to have a discussion with the communication piece after with Michael, but we're doing as much as we can to sort of translate these data into good bite-sized pieces that people would get and digest. And I see, Ryan, you put your hand up there.
Yeah, I just want to draw some attention to some good work being done by Deputy Gill's Bureau through the Urban Crime Initiative with the Crown. So that was an initiative started late last year where we met as a group, mostly superintendents with Chief Crown, and it was decided that they would identify 25 of the high-end users in Calgary that were committing crimes that normally if looked at as one-offs would probably go without much notice, but through detailed examination of our statistics, we were able to identify a top 25, and the Crown has flagged them. Through that program, I know that just from a meeting yesterday, we found out one of the highest systems user, that somebody that the, between transit, the police, and other agencies was dealing with it up to six times a day, has been held in custody since October. So you can look at how that would impact the statistics even in the fourth quarter of last year and the first quarter of this year, and that work is being driven out of the Bureau of Community Policing.
Thank you. And I do have one question myself for the Bureau of Investigation. The domestic violence risk assessment assessor team assessed 2,100-plus cases. I'm just curious, I mean, that's certainly something that we're concerned about. How many people is that and what, how do you get through that number? And then what's the impact on the people who do the callouts then afterwards? Just what are the implications of all that? It just seems like an overwhelming number to try and evaluate in a particular month.
Thanks for the question, and thanks for noticing that it is an overwhelming number. But I'll say this, the organization has made a commitment to domestic violence. This team was formed 12 or 13 years ago as a result of an audit that we did at that time at the request of the Commission, after we'd had a very serious domestic homicide that exposed some business gaps in our overall response. And what we had to do is we had to come back and we had to look at, okay, like, how does a call start, you know, from the first time somebody phones or however the call starts with the service? And how does it move through our organization to the point where it's resolved or we can report back on it? One of the areas that we felt that we weren't in a good position at that point was, or we wanted to be the best in the country, I believe we are, we needed a place where at one phase, within 72 hours, we evaluated a call for risk. We now have a supervisor and four people that do that as their full-time job. And so when you think about that, I can't give you a number of people because we do it by call. So a call could be two people, it could involve four people, it can involve three different families. So the numbers I would have to get back to you on, but those are the amount of calls that are reviewed. And that's what makes our system, in our opinion, one that we're proud of is because it's how that risk is assessed at that point. It's then decided where does it go from there? So it can go to the highest level of risk where it goes to our home team or our domestic violence team, or it can go to our DCRT. You know, in the most recent serious incident, it went to patrol, and patrol did a really good job as that moved through. And it can also go to our partner's social agencies that partner with us in that response. So if you're asking what happens to it after that point, it's triaged appropriately based on the risk itself. And we do have a team, and I know very recently, we had to go back to the executive and ask for support to keep that team going, and it was no questions asked, it was supported.
Thank you. I think it's just, for me, a highlight of how comprehensive and how much work goes on behind the scenes to make sure that things are dealt with appropriately. So thank you very much for that explanation. I think that that's all the questions we have on these two reports. I have the motion ready to go ahead. If we can put the motion up for the look.
Yeah, sorry. Sorry just to interrupt, but internally, we're working on a dashboard system to capture all the different subcategories under social disorder, so we'll be able to give those details in much more granular fashion to the Commission. So we should be able to do that. We're also looking at our, what we produce publicly to put something forward that's more comprehensive for both crime and social disorder reporting. So that's in the future, it's in our work plan this year.
Okay. I think we'll go ahead with the motion that we've crafted regardless, and just so we've got it tracked. Okay. So move, and second to direct the service to return to the Governance Personnel Committee in March with definitions and reasons why metrics are included in the crime update report with respect to the categories of seasonal factors and social disorder. I don't know that it was not seasonal factors. I think that was something that was dealt with, just the social disorder. Okay? Yeah. Yeah. All right. So with respect to categories of social disorder, which Deputy Chief Chaff just referred to. Okay. All right. And moved was Commissioner Campbell and second, Commissioner Malin. Any opposed to that motion? And that's carried, so we'll look forward to those things coming forward. Thank you. So with that, thank you again for the reports that were brought forward. We are going to move on to the other sections of this agenda. We look next at the public reports written by our commission staff. This month, we have a report from the Executive Director. It's written, and there's no verbal presentation. I'll ask if any commissioners have questions about that report. Seeing and hearing no questions, we will move on to Agenda Item 7, which are reports from commissioners who represent Commission on various associations and committees. The reports were provided as written reports, and I would like to know if there's any questions of other commissioners to those updates. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next section of our agenda, which is the public participation, Section 8. We'll invite public guests who've registered to speak to do so. Our public participation process is designed to balance the desire for allowing the public to speak with balancing the need to keep meetings at a reasonable length. Those of you who registered to provide a presentation will have four minutes to speak, followed by commissioners having an opportunity to ask brief clarifying questions. Those who register to ask a question have two minutes to speak, followed by a member of Commission or the service having two minutes to respond. Please keep your comments to the topic you provided when you registered. We also cannot discuss a complaint about any specific employee or interaction with the police. If you'd like to discuss a complaint against an officer or other employee, please contact our public complaint director or the Calgary Police Service Professional Standards section so that it can be properly addressed. I'd also like to thank everyone who took the time to send us written submissions prior to this meeting. They've been provided to everyone on the Commission, and we do appreciate your insights. Finally, a reminder to members of the media that we'll hear from the public first, and then we'll hold a media availability for you following that. So if we can put through the first speaker, please.
Thank you, Chair. We had one speaker registered for today. His name is Mr. Colin MacLeod, and I don't actually see him on the call. Let's give him a moment in case his name isn't named correctly, but... Okay, hold on here. Hello, Zoom user, are you Mr. MacLeod?
Oh, yes, this is Colin MacLeod speaking.
Perfect, excellent. You may go ahead, Mr. MacLeod.
All right, thank you for the opportunity today to present a question. I really appreciate the insight that's being brought towards the Commission and members of the CPS involved in many mental health matters as first-line responders. Today, I'm just asking a question about the amendments to the Police Act that have occurred recently and the kind of colloquial word for the loophole that has allowed for officers to resign, retire, or be dismissed during a professional standards investigation, why that hasn't been remedied.
And sorry, Mr. MacLeod, did you have a second question you wanted to ask? You just need to ask all your questions at the same time, and then we'll answer them together.
Well, I guess it's more of a statement. I would like to stand in solidarity with the victims of Aubrey Levine. I know this is not specific to members of the police force, but as an advocate for both mental health and the intersectionality of mental health treatment and the criminal justice system, I believe I'd just like to assert that. But it's mostly regarding professional standards and that resignation loophole.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for both of those, both the question and the statement. I'm going to respond first to officers resigning, and then I'll turn it over to the service if they want to add some details. The Police Act does establish a law around police misconduct. It only allows the police service to discipline current officers. While it's understandably frustrating that officers can resign or retire when facing discipline, it's worth noting that the most severe discipline a police officer can face is being fired. So if an officer ends their career voluntarily, there really is no more significant discipline that could be imposed. Resigning or retiring does not shelter police officers from criminal charges or charges under other legislation like the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Officers can always face charges under these laws for on-duty actions, whether they remain in the job or not. One aspect of this issue that does concern our Commission is that there is nothing to legally prevent an officer in this situation from working for another police agency. Typically, experienced officers are required to consent to their previous employers disclosing all disciplinary matters when they apply elsewhere, but we've advocated with our peers across the country that a more formal system is needed to ensure officers can't escape discipline by moving. So I will finish there and turn it over to Executive Director Murphy and ask if you have additional comments that you would add to this, or the Chief as well.
Thank you for the question. Not much to add beyond what the Chair has already noted. We do require disciplinary records before we accept a direct entry officer, so an officer from another service, and that includes active, serious investigations as well as sustained discipline. So it sort of catches any serious investigations that are ongoing. And I would just add that we continue to engage with the Government of Alberta on the new police service regulation, which we expect to be in place approximately the end of this year to prepare for the new Police Review Commission, the independent commission that they're establishing. And we continue to advocate for more clarity in those regulations and generally speaking, more transparency in how disciplinary matters are handled.
And Chief, did you have anything to add? No? Okay, great.
That is all of our public speakers today, Chair.
Okay. With that, I wanted to take one moment slightly out of order here to discuss a written submission that we received this month that highlights an issue that we've heard about from the public quite a few times over the last little while. Concerns have been raised about the length of time that it's taking for the service to process Freedom of Information requests and notices of time extensions that are not being received. Our commissioners discussed this informally with the service, and we're aware that it's significant staffing issues that, in the office, coupled with this increased workload. However, given the length of time, the staffing challenges have continued, I'd like to suggest to my colleagues that we would ask the service to bring us a written report on the timelines for FOIP requests, what challenges continue to impact those timelines, and what plan is being put in place to address the processing times. Can I open that up to the floor to see what others think and if we want to make a motion along those lines? Commissioner Campbell and then Commissioner Nice and Jordan?
I would agree. My note here to myself says, FOIP timelines, how and when will we reply? So happy to make that motion when you come to that, when you come to the time, Chair.
Commissioner Nice and Jordan?
Thanks. I do think that there is a need for the report and for the motion. This is something that is legislated, and we all know that FOIP requests can be extensive and time, you know, very time-consuming and that sort of thing, but it is still legislation, and I do think that we need to have a better response than we've been able to provide for the public.
Any other comments from commissioners? So perhaps I can put forward a motion to direct the service to provide a public report at the May Commission meeting on timelines for FOIP requests, challenges that continue to impact, and we know there are some, and the approach to reduce processing time. Commissioner Nice and Jordan?
I'm happy to move.
Thank you. And Commissioner Campbell, second? Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you. And so that is moved. And with that, we've finished most, we've finished all the other, the agenda items and are moving on to the media availability. Thank you for everyone who joined us today. Great reports and great information. The public participation brings to an end of this agenda. We will now move to the, Chief and I will take media questions. So everyone is welcome to stay and watch the media availability, but only recognized members of the media will be able to participate. Commissioners and members of the service who are participating in the next section, which is the in-camera portion of our meeting, will take a break before continuing. If you can keep the room a little bit quiet as we do the media availability, that would be very helpful. So with that, we'll reorganize slightly and look to the media. Thanks. Thanks.
Thank you for your patience, members of the media. We are just about there. Just a reminder, if you can please make sure that your name in the meeting is... Includes... Sorry, includes your media outlet. Okay, thank you very much. So we will start with Adam McVicker from Global News. Adam, you should be able to speak.
Hi there. Thank you for the opportunity to ask a couple of questions here for both the chair and the chief. On social media, a former director of Human Resources for the Calgary Police Service has released some allegations of a toxic work environment, bullying, and harassment within the service during her time in the role between 2019 and 2021. Curious what you both think of these allegations and what the plan forward is to ensure they're addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. It's Sean Cornet, the Chair. I will start with this, and then I'll turn it over to the chief. I'd like to just start by saying that these allegations, while we have seen and we're very much aware of them in the media, they have not been reported directly to the commission that we're aware of, and so we don't have direct information about those. We would, as we have as a commission, discuss this, and we acknowledge that there are cultural issues at the service. There have been for a long time. And just to comment that we have been working on these, and there is lots more to do, but we have worked on some of this. And I'll just comment on specific things. There was a report done in 2013, a response in 2016. In 2016, we started including questions on our employee engagement survey to track how well CPS was addressing bullying and harassment in all forms within the service. In 2017, there was a request to the then-chief Chaffin to put together a plan. It was a seven-point plan to address harassment with respect to gender specifically. Those actions have been underway, and we have recently asked those results, those actions to be addressed again and to bring us back reports on that. In 2020, the Anti-Racism Committee was established, and that was to focus on anti-racism specifically, but also all harassment and bullying in the workplace. And so that gender has been included in there as well. So there have also been efforts that we've followed along with the Police Act to advocate that there can be more modern ways of handling HR issues in the police service, and so those we hope will be forthcoming. And I would just like to finish by saying that these changes are difficult. Cultural change is complex. It takes time and effort, and it continues to be a concern for the commission and we'll continue to pay attention as we go forward. So those are my comments on this issue. I'll turn it over to the chief.
Thanks, Chair, and thanks, Adam. I guess what I would say is that we're committed to creating and maintaining safe and healthy workplaces for all of our employees as they perform the important work they do for Calgarians, and also to be accountable and transparent as we do the work. And so it's actually really helpful, actually, the work that the commission's done and their engagement of that and the governance work that's been done that are done over that during this period of time as we've worked. I would just say that when the individual worked with us from the end of 2019 to mid-2021, we were laying the foundation for significant HR reform, as well as managing our way through the COVID-19 pandemic. Since that time, I think we've made quite a bit of positive process or progress with respect to the work that we've done, including incorporating in our vision to be the top police employer in the country, and then actually reorganizing the structure of the organization to take us there. As you know, we've done a lot of work within the structure and capacity of our HR division. We've changed sort of how that looks in terms of the makeup, way more civilianization. Now it looks much different than it did in the past to deal with the complex issues that go on there. We've developed a formal people plan, which we've been able to put forward and make commitments for our annual policing plan, which are then governed by the commission as well. Again, a lot of work has been done to sort of address this issue, and I think it's important to note, though, that although good progress has been made, it's a pernicious issue and it's a challenging issue. And we know that people have different lived experiences and experience the workplace differently. Some experience it very positively, and others not as positively. And so I think what really matters is that we create a safe and healthy workplace. We know that bullying and harassment, gender-based harassment, is very, very hard on employees of any organization, and the process is also hard on them. And we're mindful of that, and so we continue to be committed, and we're going to continue to work to make sure that we have that in place for our folks.
Do you have a follow-up, Adam?
Yeah, thank you for that. A former employee also alleging that officers with serious HR concerns on her file had been promoted during her time as Director of Human Resources. Are you aware of instances where this has happened within the service?
There's individuals who have been promoted with HR concerns on their files, for sure. It would depend, again, on the nature of the matter and also the longer history of the officer. Oftentimes, we're talking about promotions, depending on what level we're talking about. We're talking about very senior officers who've had a long history with the service. So it's entirely possible that somebody's had actually a very positive history with the service, but at some point has had a misstep or an issue occur and then been promoted after. I can actually think of a number of folks as I'm actually saying that now. So yeah, I would say that that can happen over the course of a career, for sure.
Okay, thank you, Adam. We will move on to Karina from CBC. You should be able to speak now.
Hi, thanks so much for taking my questions. I'm just looking at the briefing note on transit here, which I know you didn't discuss in the meeting, but I'm just looking. So the undercover operation done last year, a few of those people charged were minors. One was a teen that was reported missing and found to be with a man who had been ordered to stay away from children. I know there's probably not much you can share about what happened to that teenager following the operation, but can you maybe touch on what this says about the complexity of the issue and how police are addressing it?
Yes, thank you. Can't talk about the specific cases you've alluded, but certainly I think it does underscore the complexity of what's going on in public spaces generally. Certainly where we have young people who are vulnerable and can be vulnerable in many different ways, you know, out in spaces where they're in contact with individuals who could be harmful to them, that's a big problem. There's been a lot of work done, both overtly, and by that I mean sort of visibly, high visibility and uniform, by both the police service and our partners in transit to address some of the issues that we're seeing in public spaces and including transit. And then there's also the covert side. And I think the covert side is important. It's something that's often overlooked by Calgarians because you wouldn't necessarily see it. But at times, we do have officers out in undercover capacities that can actually spend time in those spaces and get a bit deeper insight into what's going on and what might be driving some of the criminality and the harm. So I think that's an important piece, and we're going to continue to stay focused on that type of work, especially when we see these types of situations emerging in cases like that. So I think it's just an important part of the work that's being done by officers in public spaces, including transit.
Do you have a follow-up question, Karina?
Yes, I do. The same report, kind of on the note of encampments. I'm hearing that Minister Nixon mentioned today that Calgary is going to get its own navigation center for decampments, and the province is even scoping out space for a center like this. So can you confirm this and tell us if this means Calgary Police is following Edmonton's approach to decampments?
So I hadn't heard that, so I'm just looking down the table there. So I don't think we are able to confirm it, at least from our end. I can tell you, we take a different approach in Calgary, or a very collaborative approach as sort of social services led here with respect to encampments. And so, you know, I'm pleased with what we've been doing with our approach. I know there has been discussions, though, post the issues in Edmonton with respect to the encampments about trying to get more services out and trying to actually get people connected. And so I'm not surprised that the province continues to look at that, but in terms of what may or may not happen going forward there, we've not been advised just yet.
Okay, thank you, Karina. We will move on to Adam Toy, also from Global News. Adam, you should be able to answer or ask a question.
Yeah, thank you so much for taking my questions. First, for the police chief, just wondering what your thoughts are on the kind of the road ahead, the work to be done in terms of improving culture at CPS, given the work you've already talked about, but also given that the commission chair said that there is still, in her opinion, some work to be done in terms of culture and that...
Yeah, thanks for the question, Adam. And I think it's actually apropos that we talk about this today because, of course, it's Pink Shirt Day for anti-bullying. So I think that's... We shouldn't waste an opportunity to talk about these important issues in our workplaces. You know, I guess I walk a bit of a fine line here because I want to acknowledge the good work that's been done by our people to be able to bring us along and advance this work in the police service. I think that's been good, and I think we have employees that would say, you know, I'm experiencing the police service and my employment in a good, positive way. I'm also aware, though, that I think, you know, one of the challenges I think that we face still to this day, and we continue to work on it, is with respect to people trusting the process. The process is very, very hard. These issues manifest themselves differently in different organizations and across different sort of business lines. And at the end of the day, I think there's no one-size-fits-all approach. We've, like I say, we've done a number of things and invested in a number of ways to have as many open doors as we can so that when employees are experiencing this type of situation, they can feel comfortable and confident. But I think in the past, we were not adequately resourced in human resources. We did not have the right mix of sworn versus civilian. And I should say, the, you know, sort of the workplace, the police workplace of 2024 is a very, very sophisticated and very complex workplace. We have multiple unions, we have multiple legislative pieces that we need to pay attention to from occupational health and safety, workers' compensation, the Police Act fits in there. So we almost have this dual process that actually deals with the sworn portion of your workforce as well as the civilian portion of the workforce. At the end of the day, some of these things come across and manifest very seriously, and they can be criminal. And so that needs to be tended to as well. And the other thing is that the workplace issues in the police service play out very publicly as we're talking about it here. That's not the case in every organization that we would talk about, but I actually think it's right, you know? I think the public probably expects and should expect the police service to have, you know, its system together and to be a model in terms of, you know, having a safe and inclusive workspace. And I'm going to say we continue to work on it, but again, I will always say, acknowledge the folks that are doing the hard work. There's good work being done, and there's good progress being made. At the same time, we still know there's people that are struggling and have experienced the workplace in a negative way. So I'm not celebrating, but I am saying that, you know, we continue to make progress. And at the end of the day, you know, what matters is there's no place for bullying, harassment, gender harassment, sexual harassment in the workplace, period. It won't be tolerated, and we'll deal with it in every instance.
Thank you, Adam. Do you have a follow-up question?
I'm going to step aside in case there's any other media members with questions, and then I'll come around for round two. Thank you.
Okay, we do have someone with their hand up, but there's no media outlet name beside them. So if they wanted to alter their name so we know you're with media, that would be great. The other, Adam from Global, and Karina, if you would like to ask another question, feel free. And you're able to speak, so you can just unmute Karina. Go ahead.
Hi, it's Karina again. Kind of going back to transit, I'd love to hear more about what's being done to kind of prevent this revolving system with transit, like hearing about working with the Deputy Chief Crown Prosecutor on a show cause process, if you can speak to that at all?
I can certainly speak at a high level. I would say that there's been a lot of focus on safety in transit and public spaces, as you know. I think one of the things sort of post-COVID was there was a reluctance to probably engage in enforcement with court closures and that type of thing. You know, a lot of the disorder-type offenses that were occurring there may not have gone forward for prosecution. And ultimately, I think what we would have seen is a situation where there wasn't a lot of accountability for any sort of behavior on transit. And, you know, it was understandable for a period of time while we were trying to keep people separate and apart, and there wasn't as much use of transit. But it got to be a real challenge when, you know, transit began to roll up again and society began to sort of move at full speed again. So I think a couple of things that are happening now, when you're talking about the commitments by the province to work with police services on individuals who are having negative impacts in public spaces and on the downtowns, we're talking about situations where, and I think it was said well before, there may be offenses where, for instance, shoplifting. By itself, somebody who's appearing vulnerable that might be shoplifting would probably not be something that would be prioritized highly for prosecution. But if you were to have more information as the prosecution service and understand that the individual was a serial shoplifter and has been shoplifting again and again and again, there may be opportunities as well to look at diversion through therapeutic courts to try to deal with some of the issues, whether it be mental health or addictions, that are sort of driving some of the behavior. But at some point, there needs to be action taken, and there needs to be accountability in the system. So, you know, taking into account the business owners that are being victimized by individuals engaged in that prolific shoplifting. So I think programs do, like we heard about, like the SMART program, when people do come through the arrest processing unit, it's just another opportunity to be able to connect with people and to be able to try to get them connected with services that would ultimately get them out of the system, if that's possible. But for individuals who don't want to take any of those off-ramps and who continue to victimize other Calgarians, there needs to be consequences. So I think what we see now is more nuanced in the system where we sort of understand who is vulnerable and needs assistance and who is criminal and continuing a lifestyle of behaviors that needs to be deterred. And so with partnerships with the prosecution service, we're able to do that, and through SMART, they're making linkages to social supports that might keep people out of the justice system. So really proud of the work that's being done, and I think it's a great step forward in trying to deal with these issues in Calgary.
Okay, thank you, Karina. We have a Matt Skase. I'm assuming you're from Post Media, is that correct? You should be able to speak if you'd like to ask a question.
This is Matt Skase from the Calgary Herald.
Perfect, go ahead.
Yeah, one question here. In the report, it was mentioned the domestic violence data included. Curious what your takeaway is from that data and is the police service taking any further steps on domestic violence?
I have to apologize. I didn't quite hear the question, and looking at the chair's face, I don't know that she did either.
Sorry, can you hear me there?
Yes, we can hear you better now.
Okay, great. The domestic violence data was included in this report. I'm wondering what your takeaways are from that data and what steps the police service is taking on domestic violence, if any?
We're just bringing Acting Deputy Chief Ryan Alef up to answer that question.
Thank you. Thanks, it's Ryan Alef. I'm acting in lieu of Deputy Chief Paul Cook. So if you're referring to the increase in calls for domestic, calls regarding domestic violence and also the increase in assaultive behavior, that's actually... I guess, let me separate the two things. The good news story is we're getting more people to report domestic violence, okay? So as those calls increase to our service because they trust us and they know that we're going to give a product where we have a wraparound system that's trauma-led, there's a certain amount of calls that always come in that have violence associated to them. That percentage has not increased as the amount of calls have increased. But overall, because we're getting more calls, we do have an increase in violence overall. I would say that what are we doing? We've actually doubled down, thanks to the chief and the executive, on fully staffing our domestic response teams. We have the ability now to, as I was describing before, track a call from the moment it comes into our system, whether that's 911 or an officer flagged down in the street, follow it through within 72 hours for a high-level risk assessment, and then siphon that call through the organization to the most appropriate space so that everybody involved gets what they need to return back to normal, whether that is dissolution of a relationship or repair of a family or any sort of help in that domestic spectrum. Great, thank you.
Okay, perfect. And now we will close with Adam Toy giving you a second round. Please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you so much, and I apologize for having to repeat some of these questions. We've had some technical issues, so I need to ask these questions of the chief and of the commission chair here again. A former director of HR for CPS... A former director of HR for CPS has released allegations of a toxic work environment with bullying and harassment within the service. Just wondering what the chief and the chair think of these allegations and how they will or have been addressed.
Thanks, Adam. I can repeat what was stated earlier. I will start out by saying that the commission did not get a direct set of allegations from the person who made them, so those allegations have not come directly to commission. We are absolutely aware of them and are, will take them seriously. We, we also, as a commission, have discussed this, and we fully acknowledge that there are cultural issues in the service overall. And those cultural issues include the issue of gender-based harassment and other things. There have been a number of efforts over the years. We continue to work on this to try and shift the culture. And I commented earlier on the fact that there was a report done in 2013 that came forward. In 2016, the employee survey started to take, started to include questions about how well CPS was handling harassment issues as seen by the employee population. In 2017, so that data continues to be tracked. In 2017, the then-chief Chaffin was asked by commission to address gender issues in the workplace, and there was a seven-step strategy and programs that was pulled together and brought forward to the commission. Those steps have been watched over the first number of years, and we've gone back to those to look at them and make sure that those are still in place and see what else needs to be done. In 2022, sorry, in 2020, the Anti-Racism Committee was stood up. That Anti-Racism Committee looks at equity, diversity, inclusion in the workplace overall. Yes, with respect to anti-racism, but gender is also something that needs, that is included in that, and so that work will continue as we go forward. And finally, the Police Act, we have been advocating as a commission and others have to modernize the way in which the service can address human resource issues around harassment and bullying. So hopefully that will, we'll see good regulations coming forward over the next months to years. And the last comment I just wanted to make was that we appreciate and acknowledge that cultural change takes time. It's very difficult. We all wish that it would happen faster than it does, but our efforts remain consistent, and that effort on gender harassment and bullying will not subside. So that will be a matter of our focus for the next while. So those were my comments, and I'll turn it over to the chief.
Thanks, Chair. So I would just say, Adam, that we're committed to creating and maintaining a safe work environment for our employees, particularly understanding the important work they do for Calgarians. We're also committed to being accountable and transparent as we do that work. And that's where the work with the commission and the commission's longstanding interest in these issues comes in. When the individual worked with us from the end of 2019 to mid-2021, we were at that time laying the foundation for significant HR reform in terms of structural change and in terms of the, the, the structure of the service itself, but also HR and the way that that was going to be. And at the same time, we were also managing our way through the COVID-19 pandemic. I would say there's been a lot of positive movement that's occurred since that time. We incorporated in our vision the notion of becoming the police service or the police employer of choice in Canada, which means we have to look after our people in order to do that. We ended up restructuring the entire police service to be able to do that. We created a bureau under a deputy chief that was committed to supporting our employees, and everything that was related to that was put under that bureau. In 2023, as you know, we added civilian chief people officer, Ms. Armstrong, who's here right now to lead that. The HR division was reorganized as well, and it was increased significantly additional resources, but also civilianized. Now, that's important because it provides us with not only capacity, but it also provides us stability over time to be able to keep people there who are, who are HR professionals. I mentioned that with the growth in our workforce and the complexity of the type of work that we do and the complexion of the, or complexity of the HR function, that was really important. We developed a people plan formally to be able to sort of directionally advise the commission which way we were headed, and that actually helped to be able to do stronger governance around policy changes, structural changes, SOPs, training, and this type of thing. We created an Office of Respect and Inclusion, which is a group of internal resources that does work around healthy workplace culture, around conflict resolution, and workplace restoration in cases where there's been issues. We've developed an independent workplace concern advisory program, and that's an independent law firm we have on contract for staff to be able to go to anonymously and confidentially to be able to bring forward and get advice around any sort of workplace concern that they may have. That actually doubles as a whistleblower program in some senses because people who go there can, the information can come back to the service in an anonymous way. We also have, for the last three years, a formal relationship with the University of Calgary, where we've got researchers that we're teamed up with as well, looking at the issues of workplace culture and gender norms. And so they're doing work in individual areas of the service. They certainly started with the leadership team, and then they've been in particular work areas as well, and then, and sharing those results with other services around the province and the country. I guess what I would say is we're absolutely committed to the work that we're doing here. There is no place for gender or sexual harassment, bullying and harassment in our workplace, and it isn't tolerated. But we do have more work to do, and I don't think it's work that actually ever comes to an end. I think it's work that we will be continuing to do for a long, long time, where you have people and you have power differentials and you have these types of issues. I, I think the reality of it is, these types of issues will crop up. What matters is, to me, is what you do about it when you do, when, when it does crop up. So I can tell you that we're dealing with these issues when they come up in every single case, and we will continue to do that. As I say, we're committed to supporting our people and the important work that we're, that we're doing and that they're doing for Calgarians, and we'll continue on that path. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much to everyone and the chief and the chair. We will, we'll end it there.